Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular hybrid City Council meeting of Lakewood, Colorado on April 11th, 2022. For those of you joining us this evening by telephone, the number is 720-707-2699 with a webinar ID of 849-5732-0840. And you'll press pound twice. If you're just looking to join via the Internet, you can go to the Zoom app and enter that same number, the ID of 849-5732-0840. So with that, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Mayat Guerrero.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Over.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, fantastic. Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight and those who are tuning in via either Channel 8 or online. And I'd ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. Okay, so before we get to public comment, I have a quick statement to read. But also, if you do wish to speak tonight, please sign up in the back. And then also, if you wish to speak online for public comment or any of the other public input opportunities, if you want to raise your hand now, you can, star nine. And if we don't get you on the right one, we'll certainly do that. So we have a statement of conflict of interest. All members of the City Council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a financial or business interest. All right, so now we'll go to public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the City Council. I ask all persons either in person or calling in to observe the same disquorum of a City Council meeting held in person with no audible applause or discourse with the speaker. Thank you. Speakers will have three minutes. And if you're live, you'll have a timer and your, the lights will turn yellow at 30 seconds and red when your time is up. For those folks who are calling in, at your 30 seconds, you'll hear a ding and then you'll hear two when your time is up. So I think that is everything. With that said, we will go ahead and start. I will be remiss if I didn't mention, we did have three public comments on Lakewood Speaks as well. Thank you for that. Ms. Herskovitz, are you going to give another public comment in addition to Lakewood Speaks?
Yes.
Under general public comment, or?
Yes, I'm doing so.
Okay. Well, you're up.
Good evening, Council. Tell me when I can start, Mr. Mayor. Okay. On March 23rd, Judge Russell Klein ruled in favor of the city of Lakewood in the lawsuit filed by CCU. The judge denied every claim made by the university in their motion for summary judgment. He also vacated the unopposed temporary restraining order, which had allowed the university to house students in previously unoccupied duplexes on my street. The court's decision was a victory for our neighborhood in a 20-year battle to prevent CCU's incursion into our low-density residential zone. Last week, CCU filed a motion for reconsideration by the court, basically asking the judge to reexamine his decision. More to come as that saga unfolds. Although the city succeeded in winning this case, for the past 10 years, they have been far more helpful and respectful of CCU than to the residents of our neighborhood. The repetitious mantra we heard from the previous and present city attorney and from Travis Parker, Director of Planning, is that the ordinance prohibiting student living units in an R1, R2 zone was unenforceable, unconstitutional, and discriminatory. Last June, Mr. Parker spoke with me and Robert Barker Baker, my fellow intervenor, telling us we couldn't win this lawsuit on a zoning defense. All of this was untrue. So I come before you now to present this cautionary tale. I recognize that we have many new members on council. Most of you have full-time jobs in addition to your public service, and your time is limited. But you did choose to seek your positions in spite of this, hopefully because you wanted to represent the interests of your constituents. Well, here's where the problem arises. You feel that you can rely on staff to accurately inform you about issues affecting the city. But sadly, I have learned from personal experience that staff's agenda and goals often conflict with those of the constituents who put you in office. Bringing this back around to the CCU court decision, you must make sure that the ordinance prohibiting university-owned student living units in low-density residential neighborhoods is enforced. I have filed a complaint with code enforcement citing four duplex units that are in violation of this. Please respect the judge's decision and do not let Mr. Parker or any other staff member find a way to circumvent this ruling. Unless it is overturned in a court of law, this ordinance was deemed enforceable. Please help us preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, then Teresa Hafner, and then Mark Utes. Good evening. Welcome.
Robert Baker, Ward 1. Let me put on my glasses here. Good evening, Mayor Paul and councilors. My name is Robert Baker. I am the past president of Mid-Lakewood Civic Association, and I'm also an intervener in the current CCU lawsuit against the city. First, I would like to fully support the comments just made by Lenore Herskovitz. I also want to reiterate the importance of the current council understanding the mistakes that have been made by the city in handling the zoning issue around student housing in our low-density residential neighborhoods over the past 20 years. I will have more to say about this history once the current legal challenge is resolved further. There are lessons that go back to 2002 and 2003 and 2011 to the present that need attention moving forward. I'm gratified that the court has ruled in favor of all the arguments that I and others have been making for 20 years. Yet, I am never surprised by CCU's consistent unwillingness to be a good neighbor. Despite Judge Klein's very thorough and clear order ruling against every single claim made by CCU and in favor of the city's motion for summary judgment, CCU is seen fit to continue the legal process and question the judge's decision. Having read CCU's motion for reconsideration, I would be embarrassed if I was CCU's attorney. I'm filing a response opposing the motion for reconsideration tomorrow. Also, I offer, as always, as I have in the past, to impart my knowledge to the councilors and staff who may want to reach out to me to better understand this issue. I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Teresa Hafner, Mark Utes, and then Bart Schneider, then Mr. Comden, you're on deck. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, members of the council. So my name is Teresa Hafner. I am a parishioner at St. Jude Catholic Church, and I'm here tonight to please ask you to not close the North Access Road on the north side of Sanctuary Park. I've attended this church for approximately nine years since I moved to Lakewood, and mostly I'm asking you to do this out of a sense of safety. When my family and I go to Mass here, we go every single weekend. We go to Holy Days of Obligation. We go to church picnics. We go to peach pickup. We attend the church on a faithful basis. As a means of safety, we like turning right when we come out of the Sanctuary Park Road onto Estes to go home, which for us is south of, or Garrison, which is south of Yale. So as a matter of safety, please reconsider and please do not close that North Access Road on the north side of Sanctuary Park. Also, we have a lot of parking spaces at that church. By closing that access road, you are funneling all of the traffic onto Florida, and they have to turn left or they have to turn right. This is going to cause some serious bottlenecks and some safety issues. Please do not close that North Access Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Barker Joshua. Oh, I'm sorry, Marge. Forgive me. Thought it was Mark. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and all the members on the council. I also am concerned about the closure of the road. Apparently, it was the old Morrison Road, so it's been there for many, many, many years. And from what I understand, there are two families that are opposed to it being open. One woman wants it closed, but she wants to have access for tree trimming and for her boat to go out. And I'm going, to me, that's a very selfish thing. Secondly, I'm concerned about air pollution, as I think all of you are concerned about air pollution. If everybody is going to have to exit onto Jewel, or Florida, I'm sorry, there's going to be a lot of bottlenecks, just as the lady before me had mentioned. And once upon a time, there were three exits. One of them went to Kendrick Lakes, but because that new school is up, that exit has been closed, or entrance and exit has been closed. And the other issue that I mentioned at the last meeting is that I'm wondering what happened to the democratic system of governments that we have. Usually, a majority rules. But from what I understand, there are two families that live along that road that want it closed, and there are 1,200 people that go to Mass at St. Jude's. And if I know correctly, all of you were elected to your positions by a majority vote. And I'm wondering why that isn't being considered here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bart, Josh, and then Greg Kelly.
Hello. Am I allowed to ask which ward I'm in, or is that too pedestrian? Okay. I live at Mississippi and Sheridan. Which ward is that?
Probably 3.
3.
Okay. And I'm sure I will not follow proper protocol, but my concerns are the same and a little more general than the previous speakers. But I've kind of, right there on the border of Denver, and I see what's happening in Denver with the apartments and tearing down many, many homes to build up apartments. And I'm just on the other side of Sheridan, and that neighborhood's changing quite a bit. I've invested a lot of my own time remodeling a house there. Lakewood's great, and I kind of want to know what the plans are or make a comment about Lakewood's position on these developments. Because I see right there on, and I know it's an old community, but you see, once you see the demolition fences go up, then you wonder, you know, what's going to go up there. So I don't know if I can just make a comment or just make the statement that, you know, Lakewood's fantastic. And it would be a shame, and it's pretty similar to what everybody else has been saying, low density. And to have apartments erected to the very border of the property just congests everything and certainly taxes the utilities. And so I noticed that the Hart's Corner, which was there forever, has a fence around it now, and along with two other businesses and then a home. And I'm not quite sure if that's actually R1 or R2. I haven't looked it up. But if they were building another business there, that's probably okay. But if they're going to put another huge apartment complex like they did directly across the street, that would certainly degrade the community. And then in addition, at the corner of Wadsworth and Mississippi, on the southeast side, they've demoed the old pawn shop that went out of business every two weeks. And I wonder what's going to happen there, too. So, you know, I would say, I don't know if I can ask a question or if anybody would respond, or if anybody has any information about these properties. Can any of you answer that now?
I'll come back to it after public comment.
So do you have information?
Sure.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. And it was probably on the agenda, and I apologize.
No, absolutely not.
First time I've been to one of these, so here I am.
No, you're fine. Not on the agenda, and I'll circle back after we get everybody through.
That's great. So thanks for your time. Hopefully, that wasn't too painful?
No, you're good.
All right.
All right. Mr. Comden, there you are. I have Greg Kelly, then John Wery. Probably said that wrong. Forgive me. Welcome.
Hello. Yeah. This is much closer than I thought. Wow. It's very different from being online. So yeah, today I want to comment about, there was a whole group of people that came last week to talk about changing a city ordinance to allow people to be able to sleep in their cars on public or private property. And I want to say that I fully support that. You know, I think with the rising rents that were, rising rents that are going up in Lakewood, and there will probably be more people that will inevitably find themselves on the street. And some of them may be fortunate enough to have a vehicle of their own to be able to maybe find their way to one of these churches or whichever one wants to be in this program. And I would really like to be able to see that they can be allowed to be able to sleep in their car. Because, you know, over the past six months, I've talked with and met with a lot of unhoused people, and they are in some way even in a less fortunate place to not even have a vehicle to be in. You know, they'll be in tents, or they'll, you know, find a random bush in some park to hide themselves and sleep behind that until they're caught. And so I think at least having an allowance for them to be in a vehicle will give them a way to avoid having to even go further down the rabbit hole. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Greg, John, and then Bernie. And if you haven't signed up and you're in chambers, there might be another sheet back there.
Good evening. I'm Greg Kelly, and I had spoken to you all previously, six weeks back or thereabouts, regarding St. Jude and the Access Drive. And I wanted to more formally introduce myself in this occasion. At St. Jude, in lieu of a parish council, we have a finance council. So they're largely similar, sort of the same purpose. I have been on the finance council for 13 years, and I've chaired it for 11 years. So Father Bob and I are intimate in discussions about what's going on. And I'm here to speak in his behalf. He's been concerned that maybe his thoughts, his words were misconstrued, that he did not care about this. He did send me an email, and I will read it verbatim. He said, "I would like the city not to close the road from Garrison to our parking lot. But since it looks like they have already made up their minds, I told the mayor that I didn't care if they closed it. I do care. We need that road. Otherwise, we have only one way into our property. I think that if they close the road, it will cause more problems than it will solve." Why in the world do we need to close it after 50-plus years? Just because a couple of people complained, and that last part is a question. So St. Jude has been there since 1967. The city acquired the ground that is now your park in approximately 75, so mid-'70s. So the city took possession of that land, subject to the longstanding existence of the road that we had used for many, many years. So I would have to believe that our use superseded the provisions in the charter that now speak to this, that were spoken of when we were last here. I think those provisions came after we were built and took access there. In our last visit, about seven or eight of you made some very key comments, and here are your own words. "In other similar situations, the city simply did nothing. I have a lot of questions on this. What really prompted this to happen now? What is going on? Give us the truth. Why? This is unclear. Are there compromises? Maybe call it emergency access or park parking. It seems straightforward in this case, but the individual was worried about precedent. They suggested we keep kicking the can down the road, as that's what's happened for the last 50-some years." Expression of safety concerns. So there were approximately seven of you that were in concurrence, I think, with where we want this to go, where we want it to remain. I feel the city unfortunately can do and will do whatever it cares to do, possibly irrespective of what the community believes. And that's been stated previously to me. So I sure hope you do the right thing and are neighborly about this. As we've used it for many years, we would like to continue to use it. And if I could take, I've got eight seconds. If I could ask everybody from St. Jude just to stand, so we all know who all is here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
All right, John, Bernie, and then Maria.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, too, am with the St. Jude contingent, have spoken here in the past. And I can be pretty brief. I don't have a whole lot to add. Obviously, I back up all the questions about safety with the traffic concerns and all that, and access for the church. That's, I kind of, seems to me, goes without saying. I think there's still many, many questions on this issue. I don't know that there was really any answers where this came from and what started this process. So I guess that's still out there. And then some of the objections that were, and Mr. Kelly did mention this, about objections for open space, as though it's going to set some kind of dangerous precedent. I can't understand why there'd be any kind of precedent when this park and an access road preceded open space, even its creation, as far as I know. I'm not exactly sure when open space was created, but as far as I know, this was here long before any open space considerations. And then, final point is, obviously Greg had everybody kind of stand up who was here representing St. Jude, which is a pretty good contingent here in multiple times already. And I haven't seen anybody approach the podium or any comments that are in favor of removing this road. So I think that's a main key point there. We have all this opposition to closing it, no good reason to close it, and there's nobody speaking up here that says we ought to close this. So I think that's a key point, and I'll just leave it at that.
Great, thank you. Bernie, Maria, Debbie, and Liz. Great, thank you. Maria? Good evening.
Mayor, I'm Maria Garrett, and I've been with St. Jude for about 32 years. And I really can't think of any reason that that road should be closed, but that's my personal opinion. I guess you all have a different opinion. The only reason I think you probably think it should be closed is because of the new school, that the parents are not dropping their kids off and using that road all the time. Because we used to have three entrances. Soon as the school started being built, the third entrance got closed. Now you want to close Garrison, which was the second one. So that's the only reason I can think that you might want to close it. But anyway, I can't think of anything else to say that hasn't been said already. So I appreciate your time and all your hard work, and I hope you reconsider the fact that we would like to keep Garrison open. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Debbie, then Liz, and if anybody else has not signed up, please do so. And then if you are online and you wish to speak, please raise your hand with a star nine. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for listening to us tonight. And I just want to reiterate a couple of points that people have already made. Maria just mentioned that there was three entrances and exits through the church up until the Kendrick Lake new school was built. A lot of our parishioners on the weekend left through that Kendrick Lake school thing onto Florida and so forth. It's dangerous for everybody to turn left off of church parking lot onto Florida. And then you have people trying to turn right. You have the masses concurrently trying to turn in there. There has been accidents at that entry point, and there'll be many, many more, if that's the only one that they can continue to use. So it's a safety issue for all of us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Liz?
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Liz Breuer, Ward Three. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I need to say a couple of thank yous up here. Mayor Paul, thanks for the phone call today and the discussion about the Planning Commission. Thanks to all of you. Councilman Abel, I can't thank you enough for your support and constant knowledge on this stuff. Barb Franks, thank you for heading up this, this committee. It's a huge undertaking. Planning Commission is the structure of the city of Lakewood. Mary Jensen, thank you for your email, constant support from you, too, being new on the committee. Thank you very much. Rebecca, thank you for your email today explaining to me the process. I was a little bit familiar with the process in that I was involved with the white fence farm development, so very involved then with Planning Commission. My point of that email was, there is a, in our Ward Three, an extremely qualified person that worked on the white fence farm development, and I just wanted to make sure that she was not overlooked. And we have had that discussion before. She holds credentials that are unbelievable, and she knows the neighborhood. She's been here generations, and I just wanted to make that point and to thank you guys for helping on this committee, Jezlyn and all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll now go online. Mr. Derry, you are up. And Madam Clerk, will you still run the clock for me? Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening. Welcome.
Here's to actually coming down and logging into one of these things. I just wanted to address an issue I had today. I was surprised to find out, as far as people sleeping in vehicles. It was on my understanding a while back, we pass an ordinance in regards to motorhomes, but it does not apply to vehicles. Currently, behind my fourplex apartment, it's the corner of 16th and Reed, I've had a gentleman there for over a week. He's collecting car parts underneath the vehicle, plywood. He's never there during the day. He's got no reason to be sleeping in his car 25 feet outside the window of one of my rental apartments. That doesn't make my tenants feel warm and fuzzy. I started with code enforcement, Chris. Spoke to Chris today, and he referred me that he talked to the police. And basically, there's nothing on the books that can be done because the ordinance only applies to motorhomes, campers, RVs, and motorhomes. I walked my dog out last night about 11:30 and saw this man defecating in the bushes. And according to Chris, that is something the police will get involved in. So, I find myself playing property manager, private policeman now, trying to catch a guy using the potty in the bushes when I don't feel he should be there to begin with. Been down here at the King's Rest Apartments for 20-plus years. The last three, four years, the dynamics have taken a big change. We've, I'm not sure if it's urban travelers, homeless, unhoused neighbors, what the term is this week, but it's getting out of control as a property manager and owner. I get a lot of pushback from the police. It's my understanding, the city attorney has decreed that we, the only tool we had in our toolbox was a yellow 365-day criminal trespass notice. It was more or less a courtesy notice that was issued by the police department to an unwanted party on your property. Then, if they came back in the next 364 days, next time would be a ticket. After that, they could be arrested. Well, COVID kind of messed everything up. But now, unless there's an underlying major crime, we can't even get a trespass notice issued. That was the only effective tool I had to keep the unwanted parties off my property. The response time from Lakewood in a situation like that's terrible. I've got 18 apartments here and four apartments on my adjoining property, and I'm responsible for the health, safety, and well-being of these folks. And it just causes me great concern with what's going on, and I just would like to know, does the city have plans of doing something, a loitering camping ban? But anyway, that was that one. Moving on, one more issue. I've tried calling your office. It seems like everybody runs Blocker. The Walmart shopping carts, you know, we all had a say when Walmart came in 15, 17 years ago. I understand they're a good tax base.
If you could wrap, wrap up your comments, please. Your time's up.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Anyway, something needs to be done about all the shopping carts abandoned in my neighborhood. That's it. Thank you for giving me that.
Great. Thank you. 10-4. All right. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Tried to address a couple of things. Mr. Derry certainly, and Mr. Comden, we are going to be looking at safe parking initiative. And also, one of the key responses or key things out of our retreat was homeless response, kind of the intermediate immediacy responses. Again, we've had some more long-term plans, but what can we do to better affect the situation now? And we certainly understand and are fully aware and share the concerns for our folks who are living on the streets, as well as the neighbors who are surrounding them. So, you're going to see more to come, I think, soon on that through those two initiatives. Hart's Corner, bummer, one of our historic old places, and it's terrible to see that gone. And I can't speak to exactly what's going there, but certainly on Mississippi and Wadsworth will be a fuel station or a 7-Eleven. And I suspect that could be the same on that corner. We're seeing a lot of those pop up throughout, and we've even passed a ordinance to try to stop them from being so close together. There are a lot of great businesses on Mississippi, and in fact, I was in one this week, and one of the gentlemen's saying, "We need folks to come in and support us, and we need some new folks." So, I did flag your name and number. We can have Economic Development get back to you for further information on that. Heard a little bit about certainly the church, and I was going to wait till general business to have a further discussion. Counselor Jensen wanted to talk about that. But I will say, in the meantime, that there has been a full kind of white paper, a lot of, lot of different information that's out there that hopefully probably didn't get out to the community, so we need to make sure that that's available through our council members as well.
Yes. So, we, thank you, staff, for sending us the white paper. I'd just like to make sure everybody reads that by our next major, general meeting, the 25th. So, we're all, if you have any questions or anything, to direct to staff, or I have some extra, also some, I have some visuals that I think might be a little better to look at. I'd like to show staff some of the visuals I have. So, just so we can get a clear picture of how this developed and where it's going. So, that's all I've got.
Great. Thank you.
Can I add to that, Mayor?
Please.
We can also post that memo online, so that you don't have to try to make sure everybody has a copy, so then people can just look online. I'm wondering if we shouldn't schedule that so that all interested parties can make sure to tune in to the meeting where we have this conversation.
So, the goal under general business was we were going to have that, hopefully, on the 25th, if council would be ready to have that under general business. But let's get to that point, and we can further discuss that, if that's okay.
Sure. April 25th.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Yes.
Okay.
April 25th.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made expat by council actions. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances, which there are none tonight. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed Let me just make sure there are no first reading ordinances. Okay. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. Will the clerk please read the items on the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda consists of Item 6 through 12. Item 6, Resolution 2022-28, appointing members to the Lakewood Planning Commission. Item 7, Resolution 2022-29, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 2951 South Wadsworth Boulevard for open space and park purposes, including acceptance of a deed therefore. Item 8, Resolution 2022-30, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 2965 South Kipling Street for open space and park purposes, including acceptance of a deed therefore. Item 9, Resolution 2022-31, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 14601 West Hampton Avenue for open space and park purposes, including acceptance of a deed therefore. Item 10, Resolution 2022-32, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Mile High Flood District, Denver, and Aurora for wet weather monitoring and other stormwater quality permit activities. Item 11, Resolution 2022-33, approving an easement modification and encroachment agreement with Daniel Sanitation District. Item 12, Resolution 2022-34, establishing certain fees in connection with the establishment of entertainment districts, common consumption areas, and associated promotional associations within the city of Lakewood.
All right. Thank you. So, I think we have folks that would like to poll. Counselor over.
Yeah. I would like to poll Item 6, 7, and 9.
We'll poll 6, 7, and 9. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Yes. Thank you. I would like to poll Item 12.
Okay. So, I'll now open the public hearing for the consent agenda, which will include 8...
10.
10 and 11. Does anybody wish to speak on 8, 10, or 11? Nobody has signed up. Nobody online. I will close public comment and ask for a motion on consent agenda minus 6, 7, 9, and 12.
Yeah. Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolutions with the exceptions of Items 6, 7, 9, and 12, which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Could we please unlock? Okay. I unlocked Counselor Springsteen, so we can show the board, and then we will put her vote from what she says to the machine. So, this is the consent agenda minus those. There's been a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Somebody reflect that. Counselor Springsteen has a yes, and display will show 11 ayes, zero nays. So, we will now go to... Item 13. I'll now open the public hearing on Item 13. The clerk, please read into the record.
Item 13, Ordinance O-22-3, endorsing the projects and project funding levels in the city of Lakewood 2022 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, I'm going to go to Counselor Sharazai.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share that I have a conflict of interest with proposed Ordinance 2022-34 in association with my professional interests, and will therefore be abstaining from voting on approving this item.
Okay. Just to clarify, 2022-3. Be a pretty ambitious year if you were 34 in. Okay. No, you're fine. I'll open the public hearing. Nobody's indicated a desire to speak on this item. Okay. I'll close public comment and ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Ordinance 0-2022-3 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Discussion, Counselor Jensen.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And I want to thank Sharon, because we had a discussion at our meeting at coffee the other day, and it started me thinking about things. And I started putting my notes together for this community development block grants. And I thought about the financial condition of our country. And at the moment, we were $30 trillion. And right now, we're at $30 trillion, 377 billion, and it's going up every single second. The national debt per each taxpayer is over $1.5 million per person. The Lakewood CDBG proposal uses federal money to do a variety of things, but many of these, if not at all, are projects that the federal government shouldn't be funding. Some may argue that if we didn't take the money, federal money, some other local government would get it. So, we're just losing out, and that's an argument that I just can't buy. Continuing to spend money that's on loan is not a position that I'm comfortable supporting. I am a person of few words, so I just wanted to let you know this is, thank you for letting me share my thoughts, and that's why I'll be voting no on this proposal.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Yes. I just want to express my enthusiasm for the program. You know, the, these block grants are the kinds of things that allow money to really get to our constituents, driven by the residents of Lakewood, right? So, I, I think there is a project or two in our ward or more. And I don't have the full list of them in front of me, but I know the types of things have to do with really directly impacting the quality of life of folks, and they are all driven by motivated individuals who then organize humans around them in support of types of public amenity, of improvements, of art, of benches, of, you know, there's a variety of various types of things that, that get to fall under this. And those, that level of granularity in a budget, I don't, as a sitting counselor, don't generally get to be a part of those conversations. So, when it's motivated individuals in my ward, I do get to hear about them, and I get to hear about them from start to finish. And when I, and when they finish, I get to hear about how impactful they were for folks. And so, I am just thrilled that we have been able to structure this in such a way that allows both city benefit, you know, but down to that neighborhood benefit.
Thank you. Counselor Jensen, your light is still on?
Yes. And I, I just wanted to go over some of those. I did kind of do a breakdown. 15 beneficiaries are, are getting some home improvement loans or grants at $5,166 each. 60 beneficiaries get energy audit and toilet replacements at 1,166. And there's 20 beneficiaries getting $2,500 each. That's for government assistance for the homeless, and I just wanted to make that point.
Anybody else wish to comment? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay. This is going to be a little bit different. So, thank you, Counselor Springsteen. So, Counselor Sharazai will be abstaining, and I don't think it's going to let me, let me lock her out real quick. Can you lock her out? Okay.
Mayor, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Once we recuse ourselves, we have to leave the room, I believe, so facial expressions and such don't give away any thoughts of ours. Is that correct?
I'll ask my...
It has been done that way in the past.
It may be a procedure that the council's followed in the past, but it is not in our policies and procedures, which is all I have access to.
Okay. Thank you for that question. So, that passes nine ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Jensen. Thank you. Yes. With one recu, with one recusal, Counselor Sharazai. Madam Clerk, when you have a chance, could you unlock Counselor Sharazai out of jail? Okay. Will the clerk please read Item 14 into the record?
Item 14, Ordinance O-22-4, authorizing unbudgeted expenditure of grant funds in excess of $50,000 from Colorado Department of Local Affairs Affordable Housing Planning Grant Program for Strategic Housing Strategy and Action Plan.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. Nobody's wished or signed up to speak. Don't see anybody online. I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Ordinance 0-2022-4 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Stewart.
I just want to shout out that I really appreciated the presentation that was online that went along with this particular item. I just want to point out for the public, in case you were unable to view it, that one in two Lakewood residents are cost-burdened with their housing right now. That means that 50% of residents in Lakewood are paying more than 30% of their income toward... of their income towards housing, and there are more breakdowns by professions. A lot of it affects our essential workers, people like servers, bus drivers, bank tellers, home health aides, healthcare workers, teachers. These people are all affected by the housing crisis in our city and around the country. So I want to make sure to reiterate the urgency of this issue with housing, and I'm very excited about the possibility of having a Lakewood-centric study that really lays out the plan for the exact needs that we need in our city, for our residents, for people to be able to live where they work, and to be able to afford to have the opportunity to earn a good life. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councillor Jansen.
Again, again, this is funding for apartment houses.
Anybody else? Councillor Abel.
Uh, what was it? Six years ago, we did an eighty-nine-thousand-dollar housing study, and not much has come of it that I can see. I hope that, just to comment, I hope that we see results from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Councillor Springsteen has an aye, thank you. That passes nine ayes, two nays, the nays being Jansen and Olver. Okay. On to general business. Will the clerk please reread in item six?
Item six, resolution twenty-two-two-two-eight, appointing members to the Lakewood Planning Commission.
Okay, open the public hearing on this particular resolution. Nobody's signed up to speak. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and ask for a motion.
For the consent?
No, just for resolution twenty-two-two-two-eight. Right here.
Got thrown off. I'm... Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolution twenty-two-two-two-six. Twenty-eight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Councillor Olver.
Okay, yeah, I brought this up. I think it needs a little more discussion. We're talking about three different people here. I'm only representing Ward Four here today, and so I'm only going to talk about Ward Four, but other people might want to talk about the other wards, two and three. We're talking about three people here, and so I would hope that we turn down this resolution to begin with, and so that we can talk about individuals, because there's certainly people I'm quite happy with and some people I'm not happy with. So I'm hoping that we turn this down and then move on to talking about individuals and possible things like that.
Okay. And just as a point of clarification, you probably could make a motion to amend that out if you needed to. So keep that in mind, and we can come back to you. Councillor Sharazai?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I just want to respond to the process. I know there was also some public comment that was on Lakewood Speaks this afternoon regarding this occasion as well. And so I want to recognize and thank councillor Franks for her leadership. This is a heavy lift on this committee. There was quite the backlog of candidates that we needed to get through. But I would say, and I brought my notes, and I'm happy to discuss any of the candidates here, the through line in all three candidates that are being recommended tonight is their professional experience in this. And so for me, that was a critical piece to consider when thinking about the planning commission. All of the folks that are on this resolution have experience in their professional life, working with planning commissions, working with design review committees, and I think that that's going to be necessary for us to get the momentum we need to solve some of our community's problems. I think that this committee often comes with a lot of feelings, we know that, but we've all disclosed, you know, there was no nepotism involved in this process. I know the candidates as acquaintances, and I revealed that at the process, just like everyone else has. And so I was a little bit saddened to see some of the accusations that were coming through Lakewood Speaks today, particularly with, you know, reflection that we were trying to move this conversation forward. And so it feels like we are stunted in this, and I hope that we can, you know, pass this resolution tonight and just get going to work here. That's why a lot of us were elected, is because we feel a real desire to answer some of the calls in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Abel, then Franks.
Thank you. In my time on the screening committee, I always tried to nominate the people that were the most skilled, had the most knowledge about our documents and procedures and our ordinance. I've caught some criticism for that because some of those folks were my friends. They are independent voices and have been very responsible in their votes. There is no conflict about nominating a friend. If so, then the mayor and his friendships with a number of our past and current planning commissioners would put him in quite the position. That's not the case here. My concern is that we need people who know the difference between a multifamily building site and a methanol plant building site. We need people who know more than what they read in last month's update of the new urbanism magazine. We need folks who know what our policies and procedures are and what the processes are that are needed to provide our city with the growth and direction and vision it needs. Thank you.
Councillor Franks, are in this position. Chairwoman Franks?
Well, first, I just wanted to thank all the applicants. We continue to, every time, be impressed by the quality of the folks that apply, and certainly we have worked really hard as a group to make sure that we disclose if we know somebody, if we have deeper knowledge. We haven't felt the need to recuse because, again, we are looking at very qualified people, and oftentimes it comes down to just a difference of opinion about who might be better served. People attended the public meeting, they know... I believe in diversity of thought. I'm a moderate, lean a little bit left on some issues, lean a little bit right on other issues, but I'm a moderate. My goal was certainly to get diversity of thought. I certainly had candidates that I felt might have achieved that better, but again, that's a personal oppression based on sort of what I know about each person or what I could glean from either the interview or the materials that they submitted. So I just really wanted to thank everybody for applying. There's a lot of passion with this one, but I really do think that any one of the candidates who applied for Ward Four would have done a great, great job, and I have no overarching reservations. I would encourage, though, that the planning commission... It is something where I think diversity of thought is important, and I think that we should continue to strive to ensure that we deepen that, but I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you. Mayor Protan Vincent, and then councillor Strom.
Um, yes, I'm part of that committee also, and there were a lot of good candidates, and so I would have felt okay with any of them. But I will come from a little different perspective. I know that some people were upset because perhaps the Ward Four person did not get their first choice. And I can speak from personal experience. My first choice for the Ward Two planner was not put forward, and it was shot down rather well. And so I didn't get that choice. And I also voted no against someone who was appointed by the committee because I was swayed by a few folks out in the audience, and I let them know that I would never do that again, because this is a committee decision, and whether it's my first choice or second choice, it doesn't matter. As a councillor, we are put on these committees, and I feel it's our job to have this discussion, win, lose, or draw, however you want to put that, and back our choices. And so I will be voting for all of these folks because it was healthy discussion, it was a good discussion, and I have to agree with councillor Franks up one side and down the other, there were a lot of great candidates. I always said it'd be a lot easier if one was really spectacular, if one was really poor, and it would make the choice easier. So I will be supporting this. Based on those, it was a committee decision, and that's the process.
Thank you. Councillor Strom, and then Stewart.
Thank you. I likewise was on the committee and felt an overabundance of gratitude for all of the qualified candidates that we saw come to the table and expressed interest to not only dedicate time, but a significant amount of time as a volunteer to our city. We are so fortunate to have so many people, and skilled people, because, yes, a number of our candidates, they skill sets from a variety of different backgrounds, you know, from being able to review policy to architecture, engineering, or advocacy component, there are a lot of benefits to every single candidate that came forth. I looked at the process as a small business owner. When we have, go through the process of hiring, if we're lucky, we have more than one candidate, and it doesn't mean that any one candidate that we're interviewing or that's stepping forward for this job is not good. It's just that at the end of the day, when you have one position available, you have to find the candidate that best suits the need for that position that is available. So that's one thing that I was looking for. I mean, that's what is a part of the process, the unfortunate math of we've got more candidates than we do seating. But that's a good problem to have, in my opinion. One of the things I'll add to that, as well as looking for industry experiences, that I personally was also very much looking for someone that was collaborative in nature, someone that could come to a quasi-judicial environment with a truly open mind, and I do feel like the three candidates that we selected very much embody that character. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stewart.
I would like to echo thanks to all of the individuals who stepped up to apply for all of our boards and commissions. You are so appreciated, and we want you to keep applying because, like councillor Strom said, if we have more amazingly qualified applicants than we have positions available, that's a good problem to have. And I am so grateful that we had to have difficult discussions and conversations on this committee to come to a decision. I want to thank our nominees, some who I know are joining us here in person, and some who I know are joining us virtually. We appreciate you and are grateful for your service to our city and for caring enough to put yourself forward. I also would just like to echo the idea of process. Councillor Franks has been a wonderful chair of this committee. I appreciate her grace in situations where we don't agree, and we can all come out still being kind and respectful to one another, and I cannot say how much I appreciate that. So that was something I was looking for as well, and our candidates were people who I thought would be able to go into a situation, disagree, and still be able to be kind humans. I think that's important, and it's important for us to remember here, too.
Thank you. Councillor Springsteen.
So what I'm understanding is that the Ward Two and Ward Three interviews were posted, but the link didn't work for the public, so therefore the meeting wasn't really open to the public. And there were people who tried to get in, in the public, and so that's why we know this. So I think that's a very big issue and a very important reason why we need to consider this at greater length, as councillor Olver is suggesting.
Thank you. Councillor Franks.
I just wanted to indicate that I had no idea that there was anyone who had difficulty. We had several attendees who attended throughout much of the entire meeting, were able to see them. So if anyone was having technical difficulties as the chair, please feel free to reach out to me, bfanks@lakewood.org, but we had no reports that came in, and we did have public attendance. So I just wanted to clarify that for the community, but if you did have issues, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? There's a motion and a second. I would just say a couple of things. So certainly the applicants, and forgive me, Eric, I'm probably going to mess up your last name. Greblu, please. Councillor, please say that for us.
So we'd like to list the names. We have for Ward Two, Eric Greblunas, we full term, four years. Stephen Buckley, Ward Three, full term for four years. And William Furman, Ward Four, would be filling a partial term. It's slightly less than a year at this point. That term would be through March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, and I would also would be remiss if we didn't mention the folks that were heading out. Mr Bartlet gave, I think, four years and really spent a lot of time and energy, as everybody does. And then also Johann Kohn, Commissioner Kohn, who was a special person to many and was on the charter commission for the city of Lakewood. So that speaks to the breadth of experience that was on that. And then, of course, our chair resigned early, Mr Hild. So want to certainly thank everybody for their time and effort, and with that, I ask that you please cast your votes on this resolution. And that passes eight ayes and three nays, the nays being Abel, Olver, and Springsteen. Congratulations. We again thank you for stepping up. Okay, will the clerk please reread in item seven?
Item seven, resolution twenty-two-two-two-nine, authorizing the purchase of real property located at twenty-nine-fifty-one South Wadsworth Boulevard for open space and park purposes, including acceptance of a deed therefore.
I'll open the public hearing on this. Nobody's signed up. Close the public hearing, ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolution twenty-two-two-two-nine as introduced by, into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councillor Olver.
Thank you. This one bothers me. I love parks as much as anyone else, but the cost of this one and the location... Do we have anybody here can give us a background on how we arrived at the cost of this parcel? Or the price, I should say?
Yes, we do. So we have Kit Nuland, who is the Director of Community Resources, who may want to bring a staff member up. His name might be Ross Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Williams. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Ross Williams, facility planner for the Department of Community Resources. The property at twenty-nine-fifty-one South Wadsworth, the value came out through an MIA appraisal of the property and an offer that we made this year looking at the property. We have been looking at this property for many years to try to acquire it, and the opportunity came available this year. We used the appraisal value that they provided for the property.
Okay, there's another parcel right next door to it. The one we're talking about has the Vet building on it, and right next to it is another building. Are we looking at that one at all?
Yes, we have been looking at it. They have never responded to us.
All right. And we want to be a little bit secretive about what properties we're looking at, just in public, because sometimes that price goes double.
Well, that's actually, the next question is, the memo I saw, we were looking at a number of properties, and this one seems quite expensive. So do we have... Are we flush with money so that we can buy this one and not worry about, and still buy all the other ones that we're looking at? Or if we buy this one, or then we can't, we won't have the money to buy other ones? And Tabor, I was going to go there next.
The funding that we have available right now for this...
The funding that we have available right now for this, this particular acquisition was the Tabor, recapture of the Tabor funds. It was the initial, in 2018, council authorized $8.5 million for acquisition of parkland throughout the city. At that time, we presented a list of over 30 different parcels that we were working on, trying various methods to come across, come with those properties. And this was one that came through and finally came through after, I can personally tell you that I've been working on trying to acquire this property for over 30 years now.
Just to clarify, the voters voted to allow.
Right.
The retainers till 2025. With a third going to parks, a third to police, a third to potholes, front loaded with 8.5 million for park acquisition only.
Is that park acquisition only or park improvements included? No.
The first $8.5 million was park acquisition only.
Do we have plans on this parcel and what we can do with it? It looks like it's around the corner, and it doesn't look like there's much we can do with it right now. Is there some plans down the road? Because it's on, it's, it's bordering the green space. It's going to make the green space bigger, obviously. It's in the floodplain. Are we looking down the road at saying, well, you know, we could, we could put a dog park down here? Hypothetically?
We, we plan to incorporate it into the Green Belt. We're looking at many opportunities and what we can accomplish down there. This was a remainder of one of the original Green Belt acquisitions that we did back in 1977, and feel that it's important to preserve the Green Belt all along Bear Creek.
And that brings up a point that I was looking at, because it's, it's up against the Green Belt for sure, and it would be incorporated. But it's also on Wadsworth. And if you look up the hill south of, of the parcel, it's all retail, it's all commercial. And you look across the street, it's all retail, it's all commercial, it's also in the floodplain. And I'm going, I'm wondering if this is the best use of that land, if we take an area where we could put commercial or retail and make it parks. I mean, I do love parks, but considering the cost, I, I have my doubts on this one. But I guess that's not a question.
Can I just make a reminder that the Department of Community Resources will be undergoing a new and improved master planning process, and it will involve a whole lot of public input. So, and that will address all of the properties that are owned and managed by the city of Lakewood. So we encourage broad participation in this program. It will probably dominate a good part of the next 12 months. And to talk about the future of the Green Belt, with or without this property, would definitely be a, a subject that's ripe for discussion, if you're interested, if the community's interested.
Thank you. Forgive me, I should have gone to Councilors Jansen and Strom first, as this is in your ward. Go ahead. Whoever wants to go first.
Sorry. There we go. I had one question and then two comments. The first question, point of clarification, did the seller provide us the appraisal, or was this a third-party appraisal? And then my two comments, while, while we're waiting on that, is I feel very fortunate as being councillor in Ward Five, that is the recipient of three new park spaces. And I would just like to ask, and hopefully that we're looking also very closely at areas in, like Ward One and Ward Two, that I feel like we have lots of green space in Ward Five, and we love it, and I'm very happy to grow that. But at the same time, we'd like our neighbors in Ward One and Two to make sure that they get that. And then one more minute, and then I'll hand it over to you, Ms. Nuland. As far as dog parks go, I do have it on good authority that our Westgate neighbors right there would love to have more dog parks. And I do see that as an opportunity that would do a dog park and not upset neighbors by barking dogs. So let me get that one in. So back to my question.
Good evening, Ms. Nuland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We always do our own appraisals, even if the owner does an appraisal as well. So this is our appraisal. On the third property, and I can't remember the number now, but that one was done by the county, because we are purchasing that, they are purchasing it, and then we're purchasing it back from them for 50%. We're paying 50% of that cost. So I'm getting ahead of myself, but what was the other question that I wanted to? Oh, in regards to other wards, yes. So some of you that are new, we've been working on purchasing properties for, since we got this additional Tabor, these additional Tabor dollars. And as Ross said, we sat down with the previous council and went over a map, and we showed them all the priority, the priorities that we had. And it was an executive session, because we don't want to share that information publicly generally. And this was, this Vet property was one of the properties that was a high priority, and it's finally become available, so, which is why we wanted to go after. And of course, we would like to get more property along the Green Belt as we go. It saves that land forever and perpetuity for parkland, for the citizens of Lakewood and the region. So the other option, of course, would be to look at some sort of development. But generally speaking, citizens in Lakewood tend to appreciate their parkland.
Thank you, Ms. Nuland. Counselor Jansen, please.
Thank you, Kit. That's very, I thank you. You answered a few, a few of my questions. I do have one. Is there an expiration on that money, on the Tabor, the, the parkland money? Is there an expiration? Do we need to, do we need to use it in a certain amount of time?
No, no expiration.
Okay. And again, I, I think I love the parks. I use the parks all the time. That parcel, though, I was wondering, as a commercial, would, would the city be losing out on the commercial revenue of that area? I mean, if that were to be developed as commercial, we would be losing out on revenue on that, potentially.
It's a zoning question.
Yeah, zoning.
Answer to that question. The properties currently zoned are 143, which is one acre residential lots. This board would have to approve a rezoning of that property in the future in order to make it. It is on the, by our comprehensive plan, on the fringe of an urban growth area that we have in our comprehensive plan. Those decisions would be made by this board here. The value was based on the appraisal of the highest and best use that they could see right now, without speculating what the board would do for future zoning. But it is, the belief of the appraisers, that this would be three nice, big one acre lots that'd be nice, premium lots that are going on the market today.
I agree. I just think that one is just a little, it was a little jaw dropping to me. For, for how big it is and where it is. I can see if everything was the part of the park there, but it's not. That's the only problem I have with it. I mean, I'm having, can you give me anything else that would like, yes?
So I might offer this. We are challenged with businesses that are along that thoroughfare for access. So it is a CDOT road, and if you think about trying to get folks going south to north, across the southbound lanes, it can be challenging. And it could also revert to CDOT to say, we may not allow you to have that left in, because if you go further down, you have a left that's going on to Yale, right there, where we've struggled with CDOT allowing us to back that second lane up. So that might be another thing that can be challenged if you're looking at a viable business that you want to bring people in and out of, is having to cross Wadsworth to get over to that. Most likely would be a right in and a right out, rather than be folks being able to get across. Just food for thought. Counselor Abel?
Thank you. You know, it occurs to me that a residential lot has a pretty definite value. But what's the value of parkland? I mean, it's fresh air, it's sunshine, it's better health, it's better mental health, it smiles on kids' faces. So you tell me what that's worth. I don't think you can put a price on it, and I think as limited as ground is around here these days, we need to take advantage of every bit of open space we can purchase, especially coming from Ward One. And thank you for that thought. Ward One, where I was told a couple of years ago that, oh no, that property's in the floodplain, so it can't be developed, so let's not buy it. We get de facto use out of it. That doesn't ring true, or ring very equity wise with what I'm hearing tonight about some of these other properties. But certainly I'm for buying every last scrap we can get. I think we need to look at places that have been ruled out of the question before, because there's just no replacing them, and there's not, we're not making any more earth, but we're sure making a lot of urban concrete and steel. So I'm for any of this we can purchase.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Olver?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Counselor Abel. But the, the, buying every last piece that we can get, but we have a limited amount of money. And so this one just strikes me as being, we're spending top dollar for this, when maybe we could buy something else down the road. We have all these other properties identified that we do want to buy, and if we save our money, maybe we can buy something, a lot more space, is what I'm thinking, instead of the three acres at, at $550,000 an acre. And, and I don't know the answer to this, but I'm hoping that, I, I just going to say that we don't have an unlimited amount of money. And so three acres here at $550,000 an acre versus the one out in Bear Creek, it's $30,000 an acre. So it, the, the value strikes me as, we got to be looking for value, not just to buy everything, even though I agree with your, your sentiment. I'm also looking at the value that we're spending the money on.
Do you wish to respond?
I would. The, you're right about the price. It is, it is a large price for that piece of property. But I won't, I won't retreat on my thought that we need to buy every bit we can. And as the owner of a nice, large residential property, it's nice to hear that Bear Dirt's going for a whole lot more money than it used to. Thank you.
Okay. So I have Counselor Maya Guerrero, Counselor Franks, then Mayor Pro Tem Vincent.
You know, Counselor Olver, I, I really appreciate that sentiment, right? When I was looking to purchase a home, which, you know, was something I actually didn't think was going to be possible for me until suddenly it was. I looked at that cost per square feet. I get it. But the other thing that I looked at was the location. And while a plot that is near where nature already is might be cheaper, when you look at the value, you're, to, to Counsel Abel, Abel's point, the value of residential lots, we know for sure. But when you look at the value, it's not the same open space when we get further west. And frankly, I would argue, if that's how we're going to discuss it, I will never get another park near my house again. And I'm not really willing to relinquish that, right? The people of Ward Two have been working towards getting, and, and the staff have now been working to get together various scraps of properties here and there in Ward Two in order to piece together a park that's now going to happen, right? So, and that's very exciting, but that per square foot is more expensive than things that are already touching the foothills, because they could have been a business, because they could have been residential. But the people in those areas need access to that nature. They need access to parks, to green space, to air. And in addition, I will say, as climate change continues, one of the most potent pieces of resiliency that we have is green space, because it breaks up our concrete jungle in such a way that it actually reduces your ambient temperature. So where we have miles and miles of concrete, we end up having what's called heat islands. And we know that there are places in the, you know, more centralized Denver areas, places up towards Commerce City, where the actual, like, ambient air temperature is anywhere from one to seven degrees warmer than it is in other parts of the city, because there aren't parks. And so I, I do recognize that this one is much more expensive, but to me, I was like, well, that is because it could be more businesses, it could be more residential, and it is therefore wise to break that up, to say like, yes, we've got a Green Belt coming through here. So, you know, it's kind of creates a little bit of that connected nature, that's good for habitat, wildlife, et cetera, which does exist even in very urban areas. But it also says, like, that's exactly the kind of place you want to intervene and make sure that nature is possible. You know, and we have to, we have to balance those things. I'm, I'm definitely not saying that every single plot must be nature instead of residences, but I think when we have those opportunities, we have, we have to seize them.
Counselor Franks, then Mayor Pro Tem Vincent.
Well, first, I just want to say that I certainly echo many of the sentiments. Certainly, Count, former Counselor Skilling and I were huge advocates to get the first big chunk of money in there. And I just also want to talk about the fact that, kind of picking up on the mental health, it's a place to rest the eyes, it's additional space, it's along a corridor, it's amenities for businesses that are there for their employees. So it offers a lot of benefit, and certainly prices vary very widely. But my community is, is basically, in every survey, come out to say that open space is one of the most valuable things. And so while, again, I certainly always want us to get a good price, it'll just keep going up. And I know that staff, every opportunity that we have on those charts, doesn't mean that we're going to get the opportunity. There will be some for which there are other uses. And so for me, having something where we can do it is better than assuming that we would be able to successfully negotiate somewhere else where we might be in a different competitive market. So I will be supporting this.
Mayor Pro Tem Vincent, then I have Counselor Springsteen, then Counselor Jansen.
Thank you. I'm going to take a little bit of a broader view. When the Tabor refunds were put out for the third for open space, it became very well-known that things, or at least in my community, that things may not be what you would consider equitable, because there's not, just not those large pieces. So we, we take whatever we can. But it's also become very apparent through this, you cannot force people to sell their property for open space. You just can't do it. And I also know there's a process for the appraisals. There's been some where we've given appraisals, and then the people want more. And it's, it's a responsibility on the city not to overpay just because somebody thinks they want more. We have a, we have a fiduciary responsibility for that. So I would find it very, I would be very hard pressed to go to anybody in this community and say, we had a wonderful opportunity to purchase some more acreage for you, but we turned it down because we thought it was too much. And I can, I can guarantee you, they would say, we gave that money back to you to do that. That's why we gave it up. So I will be supporting this, although, like I said, I, I agree. It's, it's an expensive piece of property, but I'm going to vote for it.
Counselor Springsteen?
Well, I, I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I just think that there's some irony in this discussion, because a big part of the motivation behind SGI, and I think the reason that people voted for it, was to protect open space and to have something other than miles and miles of a concrete jungle, like, like Counselor Maya Guerrero was talking about baking in the sun. And so I love to hear this discussion, because I think we all are on the same page with having a nicer, sort of greener place to live with, with tree foliage and things like that, besides just, just pure development. And so I just wanted to make that point, that we're really all on the same page when you really look at it. I'm 100% for buying this property. I wish we could have done something like that with the White Fence Farm here in my ward. That was such a wonderful historical site, and it was sad to lose that. Wish we could have expanded Lasley Park. I mean, there's, there's other, other places like that, but I think that land is so, 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 so valuable, so much more valuable than what we're paying for it. So I, I think it's a deal. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Jansen?
Thank you. Okay. I will have a request. Can you move the prairie dogs over there? Get them off, get them off of the trail by the creek.
Those are, those are fine words.
No, just move them. I mean, here, just make them a new place.
People will come out by the drive.
No, just move them. Just, you know, point. No, just move them. Just can't, you know, point a little arrow. Say, here, can you move over to this parcel? Yeah, just along the prairie dog highway over there. I'm for, I, I am, I am for this. I just want you to know, because I, thank you. I am for it, but if you can get those dogs moved, that'd be great.
We have a motion and a second. And I'm gonna say this for the previous one that passed and the one that's coming up. Most importantly, I'd like to thank the voters, because the voters allowed us to keep these dollars. And they directed these dollars to what was important, and that's our parks. And we've gone, just in the time, I think, that I've been mayor, from 101 parks to 113 parks. And one of the largest park purchases in recent time was in Ward 3 with the Taylor, which we're getting ready to open. And so I'm, I'm thrilled, and I want to thank the park staff, community resources staff and team. Mr. Williams, you have so much history and knowledge of all these properties. So thank you very much. And just echo, and I know we've talked about this even when we referred this to the voters. Wards 1 and 2 certainly are, are in need. And I'm glad we were able to secure a park in Ward 1 recently. And then we were able to secure a little piece in Ward 2. But we're trying. And I know that the, the city team is aware of that, and is really trying desperately to make sure that we have that. And keep in mind, as we go to more of those areas that are more dense, those prices are gonna increase and be much more challenging on some of those. So with that, I'm excited to vote yes and ask counsel to please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen is a yes. That passes 10 ayes, 0 nays. The nays being Counselor Oliver. One nay, forgive me. Okay, will the clerk please read item 9 back into the record?
Item 9, Resolution 2022-31, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 14601 West Hampton Avenue for open space and park purposes, including acceptance of a deed therefore.
I'll now open the public hearing on this. Nobody's signed up. Nobody's online, wishes to speak on this. I will note that we did have a Lakewood Speaks comment in support. And I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem for a motion, please.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-21, as read, as introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second?
We're gonna, we're gonna start that over. Was, did she say 21? Okay. So could you remove your second and withdraw the motion?
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw the motion, and I'll try it again. I'm number challenged tonight. Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-31, as introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second?
Okay, motion and second. Counselor Oliver, you pulled this?
Oh, I did.
And then we'll go to Counselor Abel.
I had one question about this. It sounds like we're buying land in, in Bear Creek Lake Park. So Lakewood is going to own a piece of land, but, but in all the other Bear Creek Lake Park discussions, it sounds like the Corps of Engineers owns that land. So who owns what there? Who's going to own what? Simple question.
Again, Ross Williams. Bear Creek Lake Park, the majority of it is owned by the Corps of Engineers. However, at the western end, Sota Lakes, the city of Lakewood owns the area around the two Sota Lakes. And this parcel is in between the main part of Bear Creek Lake Park and Sota Lakes portion of the park. So it's all operated as one, but it, we do own bits and pieces of property at Bear Creek Lake Park.
Okay, yeah. I rode my bike all around there, so I saw the whole thing. And, and there's, there's a, Sota Lake Lodge is sitting there, and that's not being sold right now. And so that's gonna be a little oasis of private land in there. And then there's a farm. I don't even know the name of the farm. But that's gonna be another oasis of private land. That's not a question, I guess. I'm just pointing that out. But yeah, I'm all for this one. It looks like a great value.
Counselor Abel?
Ditto those remarks about kids' smiles and mental health and good health, and again, on this one. And, you know, I like to fish that part of the lake, and it, it'd be nice to have more park behind me than there is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Oliver?
Sorry, I do have another question. Going, going through the park, next to the camping area, there's a gate right now. And then there's a road that goes all the way out and goes right by that farm, that operating farm. Are we gonna remove that gate? Because, you know, it's like, you can go into the park, and then you hit the gate from one end, or you can go into the park, into our new area from the other end, and we're gonna hit a gate.
The gate we use as a backup for evening access to the campgrounds out there.
That's it. That's the one.
And it's, we have one primary entrance for vehicles entrance, for operational procedures. And that one will remain closed, except in the evenings when we open, we, we flip the gates around so you can get in and out of the campground to C470 out there.
Right. Seeing no more questions, I'd like to once again thank the voters for this opportunity. And please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen is a yes. That passes 11 ayes, 0 nays. Clerk, please re-read item 12 into the record.
Item 12, Resolution 2022-34, establishing certain fees in connection with the establishment of entertainment districts, common consumption areas, and associated promotional associations within the city of Lakewood.
Okay, now open the public hearing on this. Nobody has indicated desire to speak. I'll close that. And I will, I'm gonna wait for a motion, because Counselor Matt Guerrero, you may change it a little bit. So let's get some better direction. Go ahead.
Yeah, let's find out. Thank you. I, so I pulled this off, and I imagine that there might be questions beyond my questions. You know, I think when entertainment districts was first coming up, was that a month, month ago, month and a half ago, as a process? You know, when, when we sort of laid out the process of like, when we can ask specific things of the entities applying for entertainment districts, of course, that's through the licensure process. But what I didn't realize at the time was that there really, we were really not having any requirements codified at the time, and that there, my point is that I recognize that this is maybe not the exact right apparatus or mechanism through which to have this discussion, but I think it's still an important discussion. So my concern on entertainment districts generally is really around wanting to seize this as an opportunity to both be a good economic driver, but also a good example of sustainability and our hope as a city to be moving forward with more emphasis on sustainability, which was something that was discussed at the retreat, and it didn't sort of make it into those top two priorities, which ended up being some crisis response to our rising homeless population and affordable housing issues of various natures. But it was discussed, and it was really pretty universally, like, you know, different approaches, right? But everybody had, had that value shared. And I think that's in large part because it is a value that's so shared by the residents of Lakewood. We've all heard about it in one way or another. And so it seemed, I, I, upon really chewing on this for a long time, and then this bringing it back up in my brain, realized, wow, what an opportunity to make sure that there are best practices for sustainability in these districts, where there might be large amounts of human beings gathering, and therefore, large, large amounts of waste and energy being used, and all of those things. And so I really want to talk about what's the appropriate, possible next steps in terms of ensuring we have some baselines for some basic sustainability things. A couple of the things that come right to my mind, again, is making sure that there's composting and recycling, access to bike racks, potentially access to electric vehicle charging, although I know that that might not be fully possible in all areas. You know, depending on like, the grid and the parking that's available, potentially even assessing, a way to assess access to transit. And I'll say the reason, too, that the fees brought this up for me wasn't just because, oh, like, I've, now I've thought about it and whatever. But it was also like, okay, well, does that change that process at all? Does that change who needs to be involved? Does that change the cost? And so those are all of the, that's my brain dump of lots of questions, and I think you have maybe many, many things. I can try to clarify my ramblings if needed.
Counselor Magaro, if I might, because I did have the opportunity to chat with you before, if I could summarize kind of an idea that we thought with-
Somebody better.
-Miss McKinnney Brown that we could do, would be to build off what you were saying, is to create an idea for everybody going into this to know what they're gonna be expecting. And so we're not on the fly saying, well, this district has to do this, this one has to do this. And one of the suggestions was that there's a direction to staff to better enhance the application with a menu of sustainable requirements that could then be reviewed by council, that would be put into place in the original ordinance, not through the application. And then, but we would have that to amend, but then it would be out to anybody who's applying to know that this is gonna be part of that. Miss McKinnney Brown, can you pick up on, please, go ahead?
If I may, I just, I want to clarify, too, because I think, you know, during this discussion, like during the study hall and whatnot, right, we talked about, a lot about Belmar. It's no secret that that's a really obvious place for this type of thing to be a benefit. And so I just want to clarify that I really don't worry about Belmar not wanting to do everything possible to be the best possible example of what an entertainment district can be, but that it's really like, how are we making this, how are we setting that mark? So that, say, if there's some other place, maybe on West Colfax, for example, that might one day want to be an entertainment district, they know what those benchmarks are. So as they're developing that area, they know that those types of investments are gonna be necessary to get them there, for example.
Ms. McKinnney Brown?
One of the things that we discussed when this ordinance came forward to this, to the governing body, I think it's been two months ago, was that every city who's developed entertainment districts has done so in a way that best meets the needs of their community. And none of them match up. And what we're doing here in Lakewood is an idea that seems to meet the needs of the way Lakewood is developing. So what we know, what we knew at the time, is this is a brand-new idea, and it's gonna have to morph as, as we as a community become more in tune with what it is we want out of this. So the idea that we want to, we as a community, want to use this as a driver for more than just economic development, and, and it's also for community building and family building, but also maybe as a way of introducing some sustainability options into areas that maybe previously hadn't anticipated, it seems in line with what the original ideas were. How we would do that, and, and this is the process in every kind of ordinance update, so this is, this is a standard thing. But how we do this is, in this particular case, you can direct staff to work with the city clerk's office and planning and zoning, because they both are participants in developing the application. But have staff work to develop an initial draft application, which they should be in the middle of working on now, and just bring that back to council. So council can say, hey, you, you hit on the things that I'm concerned about, or you left some things out. Once we have an idea about the standards that we would include in the application, I always think it's good to go back and revise the code, so that the code matches those standards we've put in the application. But the way the code currently reads is that the application shall be developed by the city clerk's office to conform to the needs of the city. So it gives us the broad parameters to meet the needs of the city at this time.
That's fabulous. Thank you for laying that out. So to clarify, the idea is that we would sort of go through this process a little more hands-on than maybe originally expected on this application, on, on the development of the application, so that we could view it, see it, make sure that sort of these values are reflected there. And then we could move forward, and then just to make, essentially to ensure that those things remain, we would then codify it as sort of a second component of that process. Great. And so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone, but to determine what day, like, to what date as determined, how long do the staff need to get that draft of an application out in front of the city council?
And while they're, and, and before we make motions, I have some other lights on, just FYI. Go ahead.
Oh, I wasn't, I was gonna see what, when I should.
I, I have a point of clarification. This is just introduced on first reading. Do we have to post, postpone that? It's a resolution. Yes.
Ms. Hudson?
So it's back to me. When we can have a modified application.
When should I postpone towards so we can have a modified application by then?
Yes. I think we're looking, so we're looking at May, and we have two regular meetings in May. We have May 9th and May 23rd.
There won't, there won't be a draft application before May?
To, for, to go in front of city council?
Yeah, not an ordinance, just the application.
Let's see, we're, it's May, April 11th? No.
Oh, not, yes. So that we can revisit this resolution. So not, not the, so of the two components of the sort of process that was just laid out by Miss McKinnney Brown, there's the like, let's develop the applica, have the staff develop the application. We can all check it out, make sure that we have the right values put into there. That, at that point is when I would want this motion to come back up. Again, I recognize that they're not super fluidly related, but it allows us to make sure that that conversation is going to be brought up in a timely manner, for lack of better phrasing.
Okay, so we can bring this back to a study session for that conversation, to make sure all of council is in agreement with these new standards, if you will. We can do that on May 2nd. And that way, we can, that gives us time, A, to develop that application, but B, to go through our normal packet process, so the public can also have a chance to weigh in. So I think we could get that done by May 2nd. And we actually have a presentation, Article 13, will be presented at that time, so that kind of fits, actually. Article 13, Sustainable Development Standards Update. So this might be a nice kind of one theme meeting. And then from that point, then we'll go into action, first and second. No, if it's a resolution, it, that's where I'm getting a little, okay. So that would be, we're gonna need to look at this, and I'm gonna need to talk to staff, but close. Let's say mid-May, and then, yeah, or May 23rd, I think we can, that's a regular meeting. We can have an updated resolution, resolution, May 23rd.
If I-
So I have a point of order.
Yes.
Do we have a motion in front of us, Mayor?
Okay, thank you.
I caught this one, because, thank you for telling me ahead of time, so we didn't, yeah.
So if I make a motion to postpone, that is the maximum amount of time, not the minimum amount of time?
Under the rules of procedure, you can, if, you can table to a date certain, and there is no requirement that it be any date certain, but just table to a date certain. If you don't name a date, it automatically rolls to the next regular meeting. Unfortunately, I know that I have already approved the next regular meetings document, so I think I'm the final approver. So it won't pop up for the public to see it on that date. Right. So this can't take place on April 22nd, 25th, sorry, April 25th, because all of those packets are prepared. And we want to make sure that you and the public has a lot of advanced opportunity to review. So the earliest, the earliest regular meeting is May 9th.
So I would like to make a motion to postpone item 12?
So just, just real quick, before, can I-
Yep.
Two, two things. I have some, some lights on. And the other thing, I need to see what we, just want to get some direction on this resolution. So, thank you. Counselor Oliver, you- Olber, your light is on.
Yeah, just a quick point is, when I was researching entertainment districts a month ago, or something like that, one of the things I ran across was that Denver had approved, like a year before, entertainment districts, but no one had applied. And the reasoning that I heard about was it was just too complicated and too onerous. And so if you start throwing things in, you might want to consider that.
Counselor Abel? Okay, your light, it was, I just turned it off. Okay, so the motion then, see, we've read it under the record, so the motion would be to, to go to the date certain. So Counselor Franks, your light went on.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. It sounded like we could do the study session, and then the 23rd for the, bringing the resolution back. So it seemed like that they would have time to do some preliminary work, we'd be able to get to the study session. Was that May 2nd or 9th?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Franks.
So I just want to, I just want to get those two pieces separated, where we're study it, we'll feed in some more information, then you'll bring back the revised resolution on the 23rd, would seem to fit.
Right. So study session, May 2nd. So if all goes smoothly, which there may be some adjustments, so May 9th may not work for a regular meeting, it may be the 22nd. But we'll know for sure on May 2nd, after we hear the conversation at the study session. Okay, so study session, May 2nd. And that's pretty dialed in. That's dialed in. Are there, it sounds like that's going to work. And we're going to do it with Article 13. The question is, when can we make, when can you take action on that? That's really the question. So whether it will be ready on May 9th or not, it usually, usually, if history teaches us anything, usually we need more time to react to and to adjust the documents, and that, and then we'll have to post it. So it's probably safer to say, may, again, May 2nd study session, and then action on May 23rd. And that's ample time then to post, and the public can have a chance to, to weigh in as well, if indeed we do that.
Okay, so Counselor Maia Guerrero, then Counselor Stewart.
So that's not, I, I don't think that that, okay, so the thing I am postponing is just on fees, right? So then what would come back up is just on fees. But then the thing that we're discussing at the study session is like, the potential, like, is having the actual application be able to go live, because we've got all the things, and then a process for codifying that, which is a different process outside of approving fees. So if I move to, if I, if I motion to postpone just the fees resolution, which is relatively simple, and not necessarily that connected, actually, like, to this whole component, we could vote on that part on May 9th, and then on the next regular meeting, we would have our, like, amended ordinance first reading, or, or whenever that is able to happen. And we can, it's, they're, they're all related, but you don't actually, we don't have to move all the puzzle pieces at once.
Okay, so as I'm understanding it, May 2nd would be to discuss the draft, draft application process that would incorporate in the new standards that you're interested in seeing. That you're interested in tabling the fees, the fees resolution, which by the way, it's a resolution, because that's what the ordinance says will happen, you're interested in tabling that to the 9th, just to make sure, to feel confident that we are moving forward with the updates to the application process. So that could still just be tabled to the 9th. And then whatever comes out of that study session on the 2nd, we could bring that back post the 9th for final review.
Counselor Stewart?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't. But that's all right, we can figure it out. I don't see why we need to postpone it, if it's not changing.
So I'm, I'm getting, I'm, I'm hearing that there's still some confusion. And one of the questions is, can we pass this tonight? And, and then, because basically, we're going for an ordinance change.
Yes. You can pass this tonight. You can still direct staff to, on May 2nd, bring back the changes to the application, so that you can review those. And once this council decides what those standards may be, that you want to incorporate, while it'll be in the application, because that's a great place to give people notice about what standards are, we will want to go back and incorporate them in the code, again, just to make sure we've dotted all i's and crossed all t's. And remember, ordinance changes are not fast, that's a minimum of a 60-day process.
Okay. Counselor Maia Guerrero?
Thank you. I think, for me, the reason to not, and so if there's a correction to the staff memo, that's fine. But right now, in the staff memo on this resolution, the next steps state, am I allowed to read that out loud? Is that confidential? That's public?
It's not.
Okay, that's public, okay, great. So that's, the next steps read, "After application fees are established, the new ownership of Belmar commercial area could seek the creation of a new entertainment district in the Belmar mixed-use areas bounded by Belmar boundaries." And so for me, the reason to wait is because actually, if that application does not have sustainability in it, and then they apply, I think that we've, like, it, it, the, the snowball's out of control. So it, and so like, if that's not correct, and I'm reading that wrong, but just as the staff memo reads, it seems like this is sort of the last big threshold that is legally required to, for that process to potentially happen. And so while we would then see the thing at the study session, if it goes awry, or it's really hard for us, or staff says, oh, my God, this was so much harder than I thought, I need five more weeks on this, which like, I'm really hoping that's not what happens, to me, this just gives us that space to make sure that we talk about the application before the fees are enacted.
Okay. Counselor Shahrazai?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the points that you're making. I think I'm following you. But I just wanted to understand two, so I read that as well as next steps with the potential interest from Belmar, but we know that there's additional steps that they would have to take. They'd have to form a board and a number of other things like that. And so it, it feels like there's already a delay in that process from that. And so I, I just want to be mindful, because sometimes I, it, it feels like we delay votes, and that sort of clogs up the works here. And so if we're okay with the fee structure right now, I'm on board with understanding better the, the application process and centering our value systems around sustainability and advancing that in our community. But I just wonder if there's already enough guardrails in place that would delay Belmar being able to move forward until we had the opportunity to review that application process at the May 2nd study session, and then for a vote on May 23rd, I think was the final date I heard, so.
Okay, Counselor Franks and Counselor Abel.
And this is more just a process thing. I think that for me, it's important that the community conversation tonight's was noticed, and so people had a chance to sort of weigh in on that. So the kind of camp that I'm in is either move forward tonight, knowing that we've got the plans and the guardrails, as was just said, or have it be a complete discussion, study session, and then both things land at a common meeting, where we don't kind of just sort of dribble it out with the community. So again, I was fine with the fee structure, but I certainly appreciate that we want, as somebody who's big into sustainability, I can talk bees and composting all night for anyone in the audience who might be interested in bees or composting, but really want to make sure we either vote tonight on this, or we pick a common date, so the community has one meeting to attend for those who are very passionate about the topic. But that's just, again, just another way to handle it.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Abel?
I think it would be wiser for us to wait and set fees, when we know what all the other details are going to encompass. If we set fees now, and then a month hence, we make this so complicated for staff, that we're going to be losing money on every application or every fee paid, that makes no sense. And it doesn't make sense to set something now and change it later. So let's do this as a package, keep it together, and vote on it. And government works best when government moves slowly. I can, I can cite too many examples of fast government action that we're still paying for. So not necessarily in Lakewood, but.
Okay. Ms. Hudson?
Okay, so do you want me to calendar out that option, that option of having the, we're, we're still at the study session on May 2nd, to talk about these new potential standards in the application process. Then if we tie it all together, we would do both the resolution and the ordinance change, all of that together, that incorporated the conversation from May 2nd that you all agreed on. And that would go to first reading, May 23rd, second reading, June 13th, because we have a holiday in there. We have a Memorial Day in there. So the, the public hearing would be June 13th for that whole package, the resolution, as well as second reading on the change to the ordinance itself.
Clarification, that's not CML, is it? Okay. Mayor Protem?
I don't know. So then it would be a minimum of 60 days after that, then, for the ordinance to be implemented. Is that, is that correct? So then we're looking at August timeframe?
It's 30 days.
It's 30 days after approval. So if it's approved at that-
June 13th.
At that June 13th meeting, which is not CML, CML's the following week. But if it's approved June 13th, then it would go into effect July 14th.
Okay, so we've pushed this out, then clear out to the July 14th?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Stewart, and then Counselor Maia Guerrero, maybe we can get this wrapped up, please.
Okay. So I do understand the point of potentially, if we add requirements to the application, that that might affect staff and change the fee structure. I think that's a fair assumption. Yes? Okay. So if we do want to create some requirements and guardrails around sustainability practices in our entertainment district application, we need to push the fee discussion out. Those two cannot happen separate, because one is going to affect the other. Yes? We're going to assume, right? Yes, okay, let's assume. So there, there is no scenario in which it would be wise for council to say, we want to have this discussion around sustainability requirements in our application, things that make alternative transportation easier, make sure that we are getting as close to zero waste as possible in these entertainment districts, things like that. It would be very unwise to pass our fee structure tonight, if we also, as a council, wanted to move these application requirements forward.
You can still pass that tonight if you want. That's really your prerogative. We have heard that it may make better sense for the public to do, to wrap all of this together, and to have one, one large conversation that's very inclusive, both with the city councils, this is the first time several of you have heard this concept, also certainly with the public, and probably with our business owners, who are going to have a keen interest in whatever the outcome is as it relates to entertainment districts. So you can do it piecemeal, you can pass it tonight, or you can delay this particular resolution to a date certain, which was also an option, and we kind of calendared that. If that's something you want, you can do that May 9th. It'll get a little confusing, because your study session on the sustainable standards is scheduled for May 2nd, and then we'll have the resolution for the fees on May 9th, and then go into the modification of the ordinance in, towards the end of May, May 23rd, for the first reading, and then June 13th for the second and final reading. So it's really however you want to do it. And we apologize, this is especially complicated. We've spent some time ourselves trying to make this clean and simple, and it just really isn't very streamlined. So it's really a matter of how you want to handle this.
Okay. Yes, that, that makes sense. I understand that. If we have the discussion around the application, and we table the resolution only for the 9th, like, like exactly what you just laid out, is that enough time for staff to go back and look at the fee structure? Is a week enough time for the staff to go back and look at the fee structure and make sure, okay, thank you. Yes, I appreciate honest answers, because I really want to do what is best for our community. And I think there are several, obviously, things at play. You know, I realize that Belmar is in my ward, and we have economic development interests in the idea of these entertainment districts, and I, you know, I, I want to best serve my constituents. So I, I apologize, I'm just struggling with this one.
Totally understandable. Don't forget that we have a two-week, at least a two-week lead time for any process to be put together to go out in your packet. So that's what slows us down. So we can't do a study session and hear, and get direction from city council and be ready on the 9th. It, that, that it just isn't possible, that doesn't allow us all of the notification time that we've committed to the public. And, and that, of course, is really important to all of us. So that's the issue.
Counselor Maia Guerrero?
I think I'm about ready, but if you've got more lights on, I can wait. But when you circle back to me, I've got, I think I've got it. And I'm going to express what it is here, because, so then we can all ask our necessary needed questions. I think for me, that the tensions that exist, right, is that coming out of COVID, with new Belmar owners, there is a sense of urgency around having entertainment districts. I just want to really like clarify why that feels tense, and like name the thing, which is sometimes not something we like to do. Because we do need economic development. You know, the pandemic was incredibly difficult for the economy nationally, and we know that, and it's no different here. And so I just want to name that the reason that this feels kind of intense is because that is, that is an important calculation, when we are looking at the amount of both jobs, but also quality of life, that something like an entertainment and district in what is going to be downtown Lakewood, or whatever, right, is, right? And that's a big deal. So I would just, I would say that I, my, my hunch, and what I'm, I'm going to go on a lemon, saying what I'm, what I would recommend and what I plan to move for, unless something goes real awry in the next five minutes, is to move this resolution to that May 23rd meeting. Recognizing that then, we might not have the ordinance fully figured out, but we would have been able to have a discussion around the application, the fees, if needing to be tweaked a little bit, to reflect what's in that application, and if that's greatly changed, what is needed on the staff side would be able to be addressed by that point. And that the resolution will then take much longer, but that at that point, we can have the fee structure in place, we can have an application that has the guidelines, and then, and those, those public documents that allow potentially future entertainment districts to kind of have an understanding of where that parameter is. And we can still go ahead and codify it on that longer schedule. But that that would allow robust public discourse on the topic, you know, on two given days. And then, you know, it wouldn't be the end of the conversation with the ordinance, but that, then they can all move a little bit more together without putting us to next fall, or what have you, to be able to have the process in place at all.
Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. There may be something in place that might help. We're looking at nearly next fall before this could be put together. Don't we have a special use permit process for things like festivals, and block parties, and that sort of thing? And might we be able to adapt that, so that if Belmar needs something this summer, or some other place needs something this summer, a shot in the arm, we can turn to this alternate process?
You're right, Councilmember Abel.
I like that answer. We should all learn that answer.
You're getting it from me for once. Yes, you're correct, there, there's-
There's a block party and there are festival permits, they could move a lot faster. We'd have to take a look at that to just, and frankly, as far as I know, what it is Belmar wants to do. I know they have some plans. In my understanding, they were hoping to be moving forward with some plans in June. So this would sort of put that off a while. But I can talk to the planning staff and Director Parker and get back to council as soon as possible on that. Thank you.
However, to that point, I don't think they're precluded. We have an ordinance in place, they can apply under the current ordinance. So, they could still go forth and just not know what their fees or requirements are, but they could still start to build the structure because we have already allowed that to go forward.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
One of the submittal requirements for the application is the submittal of fees.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't be processed, the application couldn't be processed until the fees are paid under the current ordinance.
Mayor Protem Vincent.
I'm in a conundrum about this also, because here's what I found from council, is that we look at something and we talk about it, and then we tell, this is, I've seen this repeated over and over again. Then we have council, we give direction to staff, and staff goes back, and then it's delayed at least another two weeks because we have things in place. And I've seen very simple things that people say that have gotten delayed, frankly, for six months or more. So, I don't know what to do. I'll be honest, I don't know what to do with this situation. I don't mind talking about the fees, and I think sustainability is important. But I don't know why we can't move this forward and then have to talk about the fees, especially since we're gonna be talking about 13 on 5/2, right? I'm confused as to dates now. On 5/2, okay. Yeah, so then we'll be able to talk about that with a lot of the other sustainability things that are coming forward, is that correct? Which seems to make sense to me.
That's accurate. And that's a study session. On 5/2, Article 13.
All right.
Okay. Yep, go ahead, please.
I would like to make a motion to postpone Item 12 as read by the clerk into the record for May 23rd.
Second.
What, may I make one point of clarification? So, the actual action, so May 23rd is first reading, so that's... Let me just give this point. So, May 23rd is first reading of the ordinance, and if we tie them together, wouldn't it make sense to have the second hearing and the resolution on the same day for that full conversation? That would be June 13th, just a thought. Otherwise, we're having, we're bisecting, we're bisecting the issue again, because one action would be on May 23rd and the second action would be on June 13th. Sorry.
If the motion...
I withdraw in a second.
Thank you. Withdraw your motion, please.
I withdraw my motion.
It's okay.
We're all in it together.
So if you'd like to make a new motion?
I would make a motion to postpone Item 12 as read into the record by the clerk to the regular city council meeting on June 13th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay. Please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen, is it yes? That passes eight ayes, three nays, the nays being Jansen, Olver, and Stewart. Okay. So, we will now go to general business, and I'll go to Counselor Strom.
Thank you. Sorry, that moved, after going very slow, that moved very fast. I, so, after our last meeting on March 28th, over 100 of our Lakewood residents and neighbors showed up in unity to demonstrate their support for Bear Creek Lake Park and in opposition to the proposed expansion being considered in the current water feasibility study conducted by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Colorado Water Conservation Board. After that meeting, I asked to join Ms. Katie Gill of Save Our Bear Creek Lake Park and our city manager, Kathy Hodson, in their meeting to follow later that week, to learn more about the background, the status, and the proposed alternatives to this potentially significant change to our park. For those that are not aware, that are listening tonight, though the city of Lakewood leases the land, it actually is owned by the federal government. The potential changes being considered on this property by the Corps of Engineers would change the original intent of the dam and the park from flood control to potentially adding water storage of up to 20,000 acre feet. In comparison, the lake currently holds about 2,000 square feet, acre feet, sorry. The feedback we heard from the community in our last council meeting via email, and even most recently in our Ward 5 meeting, has outlined numerous negative impacts that this change could impart on our community. Impacts that include increased flood risks to downstream homes, inundating and displacing wildlife, impacting the recreation and social well-being of many of our community members, to name a few. After seeing the community show up so actively and to communicate the implications of what, and with a request for help in advocating for this cherished park in our city, I would like to propose that the Lakewood City Council, through a proclamation, provide our concerns to the Corps of Engineer and ask them to take heavy consideration of the alternatives that have been proposed. Alternatives that can be done across the state that would impact wildlife and human lifestyle significantly less than what is currently being considered. So I would like consensus for a proclamation to be read onto the record in their meeting on April 25th to support the efforts of Save Our Bear Creek Lake Park. If done, this proclamation can then be directed to both the Corps of Engineers and the Colorado Water Conservation Board.
All right. Sounds good. Any concerns or questions? Okay. Go forth, and hopefully we'll have that, I know we gotta post things quick, but hopefully we'll have that sooner than later. That'll be our first in-person proclamation since 2020-ish. Be cool.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on your general business? Counselor Maia Guerrero.
I just wanna very quickly highlight the continued conversations around both cost of living and then also the growing amount of unhoused folks in the area. And at this moment, don't have anything specific to be moving forward, but it seemed really outside of, like, specific ward business. And so I wanted to bring it up here in general business, and just to, again, reflect that this is something that we came to as priorities to address as a full city council body at our retreat. And I'm very much looking forward to our study session on safe lots, and I think that there, that that is hopefully the beginning of a lot of conversations here. I don't think it is lost on anybody on this dais, or really in the community, that we're facing a moment of real crisis when it comes to the unhoused and housing insecure and the amount of people that are likely to become homeless also, right? That's what I mean by housing insecure. And so I did just wanna pull that out and just to recognize that we got comments about that again today from different people with different types of voices, and everyone wants to address those crises differently, but they are interconnected, and it is incredibly necessary and important that we start those conversations, which we are doing. And so I just wanted to pull that out.
Thank you. Anything else? And I'll just close general business with, on that point, I know Ms. Hodson is taking all of this from our retreat and diligently working with her team on a lot of different programs or ideas that are gonna be coming forth related to the main goals going forward.
I can add a little bit to that. We actually met, we had 14 staff members that I met with who represent different disciplines in the organization, and we are formalizing our response to the unhoused population and as a result of your priority that was identified at your recent planning session. So without saying a lot more, the working group now is putting the real structure together so that we'll have a real robust program, and it won't be led out of the police department, it'll be led out of a non-police department, and we will have the CAT team very involved in this, but it's going to be the multi-discipline and much more formalized than we've done in the past. And when I say formalized, I mean both from an operations perspective, but also from a budgetary perspective. So we're not just, so the employees, the different departments aren't having just a scratch, different accounts to find the funds to clean up homeless camps, et cetera. So, I'm really excited about it, the group, we spent a lot of time together, and the group is really energized about this new approach that'll, again, will be much more formalized and have more structure. People on the inside from the organization will have great access to status of cleanups, as will the public. So people will be able to see the status of the calls that they make. So I won't go any further, because the smart folks, who are the ones who are really on the ground, who've been addressing this over the last couple of years, are the ones who are putting the structure together, but I'll be excited to present that to you. So thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go into council member reports by ward. Is there a ward that wishes to go first? There we go. Ward 1, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Things are going along pretty good, Ward 1, but I would like to note that tomorrow night, I'm sorry, Wednesday night, the 13th, there will be a virtual meeting for the Wright Park Master Plan, Wright Park's at 500 Wright Street. And it is available, the virtual meeting information is available at Lakewood Together. The front page of that has the Wright Park icon on it. Click on that, and it will take you to the second page that has the directions to get to the virtual meeting. And I'd encourage everyone, no matter where you live in the city, especially Ward 1 members, please attend this and speak your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I would love to just add that, thanks to community members, I've spent a number of evenings and afternoons over the last two weeks with folks from Ward 1 who've reached out, taken me on a walk, gone on a driving tour, we've shared a meal together to reinforce what they'd like to see in Ward 1 and what they'd like to see in their community. So I would just encourage members to continue to reach out on that. I appreciate the institutional knowledge and recognize that there's a lot to learn in this. So, keep it coming. I'd also just like to mention that I spent April 2nd all day at the Denver Regional Council of Governors, often referred to in this body as Dr. Cog's annual retreat. And I'm really excited to bring some of the ideas that are coming out of that body around affordable housing and transportation alternatives to Lakewood. It's 58 municipal leaders from around the metro area coming together to discuss these topics, and so I'm looking forward to that. And then my last piece would just be, there's another ward meeting on April 21st, this one will be virtual. We've moved to offer a secondary option on a weekday evening, also in recognition of Passover, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we'll be hearing from members of the community action team, and also the county will be giving a presentation on some of the budget challenges that we're faced with. So, the Zoom link is on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. And I might just add real quick, thank you for your work on Dr. Cog. Everybody serves on committees. That one is a challenging committee. 58 local governments. Ward 2?
I have no report.
Thank you. My main point in my report is just that we will be having our ward meeting on the third Wednesday of this month, as always, which this month is April 20th at 6:00 p.m. at the Clement Center, which is off of Colfax and Wadsworth, more or less, are the biggest intersections there, and via Zoom, so it's a hybrid meeting. You can find more information about that currently on the city website, but I will also be posting the Facebook event shortly.
Thank you. Ward 3?
Thank you. I wanted to announce to the community that Ward 3 will be having our ward meeting on Saturday, April 23rd, which I realize is also Earth Day, so come to our ward meeting and then go to Belmar Park and celebrate Earth Day. From, at 9:30 a.m., we are hosting and also being hosted by the new owners and management of Belmar, so this is timely, to allow the community to hear about the plans that they have for continued revitalization in our downtown Lakewood area, new economic development. So please, this is open to anyone in the community who is interested in what's going on with Belmar and is interested in meeting with and engaging with the new owners. Ask any questions, come to learn more about what their plans are. If there is an additional hybrid or virtual option, we will update that on the website. We are still establishing an exact place, so stay tuned for that. It will be on the website and in your email.
Counselor Springsteen.
No report.
Thank you, Count. Ward 4. No reports from Ward 4?
Just one, one quick thing. Last Saturday, or a little over a week ago, I went to the play across the way here, 1776. So it's not a Ward 4 report, but it's a Lakewood report. It's actually the first play I've gone to here for Lakewood, but I used to have season tickets to the plays downtown, and I'm from Pennsylvania and have gone into New York City and watched plays, and I was very impressed on the quality here. It was, the singing was really well done, the acting was well done, it was, it was better than I expected, and that's always fun. So if anybody ever wants to go do that, there is other plays coming up, and I strongly recommend it.
Ward 5, please.
Okay, so, Wendy, I'm gonna take this for ya. Wendy and I met the new owners of the Jewel Square, and they're interested in revitalizing it, and we're real excited about it. So they picked our brains on ideas, and we, it was a great meeting with a fifth-generation Coloradan who really cares about our community. So, we're looking for some good things to come out of what's gonna happen with Jewel Square after so many years of potholes. So, all right. And also, the Historical Society has a new website, it's LakewoodHistoricalSociety.org. You can go check it out. They're not quite done with it yet, but start checking it out. They're gonna be adding more things to it. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Counselor Strom?
Yep.
Go ahead, please.
I wanted to first thank our residents, and for this, it's actually not even just Ward 5, but I know that we, all of the feedback that we've received regarding Bear Creek Lake Park has come from people that use it, people that live in Lakewood, people that live outside of Lakewood, and your input matters, and it is your input and your consistent input that has helped us really learn more about what is, what was being proposed and how important really fundamentally that the park is to you as a community. It's sometimes kind of isolating in the jobs that we have and that we have lots of decisions to make, and we don't always get input from the community. So you guys showed up in droves, and I'm so grateful for that, especially for those of you that came to us intentionally, offering solutions, wanting to help and wanting to get involved. It really does, I mean it in all sincerity when I say your input counts. I know we get comments sometimes like, "Oh, you guys won't do what we wanna do," and government doesn't listen, and we really do. And I hope that this proclamation will illustrate that to you. On the note of Bear Creek Lake Park, we'll say Bear Creek Trail in this case, we actually, I just wanted to do another announcement, that construction is going to begin on the trail very soon. wanted to do another announcement that construction is going to begin on the trail very soon. There, there, it will be in some places probably somewhat significant, that might be a scary word to say, but there are some sidewalks that will be adjusted and widened and will be getting a soft trail, all in the vein of increasing visibility in some of those tight spaces and really helping us to improve congestion as well and make it so that it's really a better place, a more spacious and outdoor space, Counselor Abel, where children can go smile. Lots of children. So just be aware of that. And I will make a plug, as Counselor Olver did, for the Greater Lakewood announcement. New and dear to my heart, we do have, April has Drug Take Back Day coming up, as well as recycling, bring your recycle stuff. I think that's actually at the Belmar Earth Day event. So please check the Lakewood events calendar for both of those coming up as well.
All right, thank you. So Mayor Inspiration Awards is coming up and you'll start to see information and maybe some of these in your box. They're in English and Spanish. And this is a great opportunity to honor folks in our community in a couple of different categories, youth under 18, individual over 18, and organizations. So please start to think about that and get the word out. It's, it's always wonderful to nominate folks that came from our Lakewood Advisory Commission. Some of you attended the Regional Homeless Conversation. I know Ms. Hodson was on that and, and I think probably well over 100 and some other folks from throughout the metro. It's kind of being built off of what they call Built for Zero, and that's figuring out how do we house homeless veterans first and take that model to then carry out for, with Built for Zero for all folks who are looking for a home. A lot of good information and also some good validation that we're doing things that are kind of blazing the trail. So thank you for that. We talked two weeks ago about our trip to Washington, DC. And actually Senator Hickenlooper followed up because he was not able to meet in person and had a conversation with Ms. Hodson and myself and Mr. Hutchison. And as you can imagine, that was infrastructure. And continuing to talk to him about the importance of our 6th and Wadsworth project, which he knows going all the way back from being the Denver mayor, that that's been a priority. And then also talk to him about some other projects within the community that we were excited about. Counselor Strom touched on this, but this is a little bit beyond that, but the Drug Take Back Day, fentanyl is, is top of mind in our community and certainly at the state legislature. And I'd encourage everybody to be involved and really have those conversations with your neighbors and friends. It's very dangerous and it's unfortunately in a lot of different places where folks may not think that it is. And certainly as we've seen children in our community die, adults die. And so I want to make sure that's top of mind. It's not easy to talk about, but it's a challenging situation. Then on a cool note, we have what's called Lakewood Link that started under our previous mayor, Bob Murphy. And it was the idea of bringing the community together. And through that, the Lakewood Faith Coalition was born. And then we brought together our service groups and then we created the Coalition to End Hunger in Lakewood. And so the Faith Coalition and the Coalition to End Hunger in Lakewood have teamed up to look at building resource centers in our Title I elementaries. And they've already been in, most of them doing food banks, backpacks, supporting the teachers. But they're really looking at enhancing that over the next few years. And part of that is going to potentially be with a partnership with Lakewood Legacy. And that might ring a bell to some, but it was kind of our 501(c)(3) that did a lot of things throughout our community. In fact, they still run our grant program. And so now there's been an ask to Lakewood Legacy to be the financial guardian of those dollars when donated to then go to the resource centers. So a lot of really cool things, I think, happening there and trying to help those most in need. And so if you have a chance as council members, stop into those schools. I know the principals are always thrilled and excited. And we have a lot of high need schools in our community and those needs continue to grow. So with that, I'm done. I don't know, Ms. McKinney-Brown, Ms. Hodson, anything? Okay. Well, we'll adjourn at 9:30 p.m. and thank you all very much.